Now, we will proceed to the city council for financing for that property. And then, of course, a discussion about the school, we go through the normal process, the ESPN requirement, which each body would have to take note on. And it may not, you know, it might not be immediate. One of the challenges we have in the city, like any other area, is the same buying land because there ain't make any more of it. And there aren't a lot of opportunities in that part of the city for such a potential school site, so certainly taking all that into consideration. It was funny when you look back, it really ran Willard, they were very, very small sites at the time for those schools, and other requirements have certainly changed. So I just want to get the perspective of how, my question was about how it would help us with the numbers, and I'm assuming once if we've got a process of a new school, that opens up the whole issue of the district lines, in a good way. It's tough to do redistricting, as we all know, at any time, but it's probably a little bit easier when you're talking about additional schools relating to redistricting. So I know that, in my experience getting into some of these schools, because of the requirements, additional educational space, and the one-on-one, and the special programs, we can't have enough space, so we'll keep everybody informed on the process and take it a step at a time.
All right, so looking at middle schools, and take a look at all of our middle schools, and looking at the enrollment and the difference between 15 and 16, just a minus five, so just not really significant at all. I'll get into Broad Meadows profile, 32, but it's really a larger grade six coming in and a very small eighth grade leaving, but we'll talk about that. So we've got two yellows, Central is red, and then plenty of enrollment right now at Point Webster and Sterling, Sterling Middle School. Here again, same thing we did with the elementary, taking a look at three of our schools that have specialized programs and how many of those students are there. Class size information, we presented this in October, I believe, but, you know, ninety, ninety-four percent of our classes and our five, our five middle schools are 24 students or fewer, so we're very, very proud of that because it's so helpful to our teachers, certainly our service delivery to students, and this is the, these are in our core academic areas, grade six through eight. Also, do the advanced classes that were talked about in teaching and learning, and how extraordinary that effort has come, and how our teachers have really embraced that, and how many students are taking advantage of that are really phenomenal, so we're very, very proud of that. Building site profiles, Atlantic Middle School, yellow. You see it, just, I don't know if I have a picture, so it's just a kind of incremental decline in enrollment. There's, there's space there to grow if we ever, ever needed to, and you never know if Central gets to a point where the committee decides, or the superintendent, you know, discusses with you, that we look at a part of the Atlantic-Central boundaries and bring it closer to Atlantic, you know, to help out Central, you could, you could really think of doing that. Broad Meadows Middle School, again, room, class size excellent, you know, the pie chart to the right shows you the percentage of specialized program students that are there, which is, which is very helpful, but also take a look again, that 379 is the total of students there, but, you know, if we're looking at 54 of our special education students being there, you know, they, they really go back to, really a little lower than that, they go back to 318, whatever, 2007, 2008, 2009 or so. There's, there's room at Broad Meadows if we ever needed to do anything at that school. Central Middle School is red, talked at 660 students in 15, gone down to 643. You can see the comparison to the Advanced Placement Program Neighborhood, students, again, class size is fine in the D and D really, right now, and what we're hoping is that that 643 goes down to six, maybe 20 or whatever. Built a school for 600 students, for 600 students, so if we can get it down, be a bit more comfortable that every class, every classroom is used at Central. Point Webster, green, plenty of room, and again, for the bump coming up from Majo, there will be no problem of those students being housed very nicely, actually, at Point Webster. And again, you know, 344 students, you look, and you take a look at where Point was back in 2006, and they're about, about the same, but there is room to grow for me to certainly add Point Webster. Sterling, plenty of room, class size excellent, and we continue to work with MSBA and the mayor's office, the building committee, in order to share with you, and probably in the next two or three weeks, we'll, we'll come to facilities and share with the building committee, and ensure we're looking out right now in the planning and what may happen, you know, as soon as this April and summer at Strong Middle School, we'd be proud of that. The MSBA projects, New Central, obviously, October 13, and looking forward to working with Sterling as well. Open enrollment, you can just see the, the Central, open enrollment, 10 students gone in, siblings, you know, so that, that's the increase at Central. Other than that, you know, Atlantic at Broad Meadows, nine students, eight students, that's a, that's a good thing, giving our families choice as to what middle school they want to go to. The high school, North Quincy, Quincy, takes a look over since 2007, and take a look at the trends in enrollment, and, you know, obviously, the trends in enrollment here have been, have been affected by construction. So when you look at pre-construction of Quincy High School, there was far more students, you know, 200-plus students at North Quincy High School, and as the construction was completed, school opens, you can see where there's a bit of a switch, you know, just a, a different balance of, of enrollment. Quincy High was built for 15, 50, 16, 100 students, so it's, it's fine right, right where it is. North Quincy's a bit lower than it was back then, but I also think with North Quincy, and I'll show you a graph in the next one or two slides, but I think what you're doing now with Chapter 74 programs at North Quincy, because most of the open enrollment from North Quincy, Quincy, these are our students that are involved in our Chapter 74 programs. So the more we increase, and I know this is the mayor's design, I know it's the school design, and we've talked about it with Mr. Regoli, that, that's, this will get more students remaining at North Quincy High School because of those very fine Chapter 74 programs, and they're growing, so that, I think that will be a very positive for it. But when we look at the enrollment, when we look at here, we say, okay, oh, the class size first. Class size extraordinary, again, you know, you've got 84%, 25 students are fewer, but if you just start to do, go to 26, it's 90% of our classes, exceptions, that North Quincy and Quincy are 25 students or fewer. I, I think that's unbelievable, and the teachers feel exactly the same way. Excuse me. This is North Quincy, this is when we start, you know, we look at it, such a significant drop in enrollment, and when you look at when Quincy High opened, it was directly related to a new school, new construction, and as well, I think, the Chapter 74 program. So we'll continue to look at this, but I think that the programs that you're, you're adding to North Quincy High School, certainly will add at least 100 students and 150 students as we go, as we go forward, that are North Quincy kids that want to stay at North Quincy High School. Quincy High School, since 2011, 2010, when it opened in 2011, actually, I don't tell them, has stayed pretty much the same, 1551, 2012, but, you know, coming back down again to 1456, which is a good size, a very good size for that school, I'd like to keep it right there for that school, or even a little less at, at Quincy High School. Evening school continues to be an incredible thing for so many of our kids. You can see 18 and 14, grade 12, 32 total goals, you know, having 32 students at the Gols program right now, two incredible programs for, for our students and their, and their families. So we'll take a look at the MSBA, obviously, Quincy High School, 2010, so much work has gone into North Quincy High School above and beyond the MSBA, but new windows and doors in 2015, new booth is a statement of interest for, that we put in now, that will go for probably the summer of 2018. Open enrollment, this is where, you know, you look at the 63 students come from North Quincy to, Quincy High School, 32 North Quincy student, arrived at North Quincy from the Quincy, Quincy district. So that's a, it's, we just keep taking a look at that, and I think that will even out as we go forward for North Quincy and Quincy open enrollment. So, excuse me, this is the last slide, and just, you know, in summary, you know, we need to keep taking a look at the trends, we need to look at kindergarten registration, and that's going to push us forward to either act or not act, and we'd like to not act in regard to changing things that are right now, boundaries of any of our schools. I think when we look at the red, we look at Beechwood, we look at Lincoln Hancock, we look at Clifford Marshall, we look at Montclair, all of those, I think we need to really take a look at the kindergarten registration coming in, and if we need to talk about a school that's much tighter than we want, you know, then I'll be presenting to you options that you may really consider as we go forward. So with that, I want to say thank you, and whatever questions you have, if you have questions, how wonderful, if you want to come by at any time and go through some of these things, but it is great information, you know, as we look at this year, as we go for next year, whether it's budget or, or staffing in particular. So with that, if you have any questions, terrific. We also canceled school first tomorrow, just to keep it on the low.
By the way.
No, well, it's not, we know that. Questions, anyone? All right, well, I want to thank you very much. This is Molly.
Well, thanks for announcing school, sure, a lot of people are interested in that, too. So I have a question. So when you do the enrollment for kindergarten, when does that start? Is it March?
March 7.
March 7, and when do you figure out, I mean, I know that you're doing your estimates for kindergarten enrollment, because that seems to be the thing that has, let's say, this impact on our budget and on our class and sizes depending on those things. So how fast in that enrollment time period can we estimate how many kids come into us as a, do you have a prediction before they even come to enroll, or?
No, I think we look at the trends and we try to say that everything pretty much stays the same as most of our schools.
And often those things bump, so we know that those are not statistically sound, so I guess I'm trying to find out.
I guess, I guess, you know, when we, when we usually, when we talk about getting out bottom line, is that May, late April, early May. For us, we're taking a look at it all the time, principals are panicking on daily basis, we have too many, what's going to happen, so, but by the time we get to probably late May, early June, I think we have a, a very decent idea about what our kindergarten class size and how we're going to shift either from building to building, or, yeah, you know, shifting of staff is the, is the key with budget.
So I'm curious, I'm just curious, because I know I was doing a little bit of research on other communities, which we're all, we're all doing that homework recently, and not only was I looking at, you know, what size of the other communities were, what salaries were in the other communities, but I was also looking at how the other communities handled certain things. And we've had this discussion before, and other communities do predictive modeling as far as enrollment, and, you know, Quincy's unique, we have a high, we have a high range of population and apartments and things that we can't really, that, we've had this discussion that you feel as though we can't use the same statistical analysis that other communities have.
Sure.
I challenge that, but, but I appreciate the fact that you gave me that. What I did find, though, is that in other communities, they start the enrollment process much earlier than we do, January is really, January, February, and in February, they kind of have an idea. Now, I understand also you're going to help open enrollment, because kids can enroll all the way up until the day school starts and even past that, but the earlier you're able to predict that, the better you're able to understand potentially the impacts that you're having from schools. Like last year, we were very late in the understanding that we need to build out a classroom that features Noel, and we were doing that very last minute in the summer. There was a lot of, you know, uneasiness with parents, because, you know, a classroom split in half, and then we go ahead and we look through your chart, what we realize is that you have a kindergarten class, you know, that I think you have 22 kids in one class, and the other three classes are 16, 16, and 16.
Sure.
It's just curious as to why that worked out that way, it seems very high, 16 in one class, when you have three other classes, and, and three classes are 16, I'm a class of 22, why you didn't spread those numbers out a little bit more for the kindergarten class when I'm looking at that. So I guess I'm just curious to know why, you know, what, is there anything that would prevent us from starting that earlier to maybe help us kind of get a jumpstart on it? I realize there's a million things to learn.
I think there are a lot of variables, I'd be interested in looking at whatever concept that we could apply. What we've done is for a long time, and if there's a way to kind of inject in January and February some, some way defining what will be in June, July, August, and September, I'd love to know what that is and what other communities do. I think it'd be incredibly difficult because of the variables, but they must, they must use those variables somehow, some way, in some sort of formulaic form or something, but I, I think it would be very difficult, but I'd be very interested in learning what other school systems do in order to get to the staffing that would be, you know, far more completed earlier, that would be, that would be a great thing, you know, just so we.
I think it's just modeling different, I mean, I don't think this is anything that I learned during my, my, you know, research, it's nothing different than you or Ron or anybody else in your staff would do, and obviously, our system is different than other systems, and it's not necessarily doing exactly what another community is doing, it's just learning their best practices, and if they're doing it, you might be able to not take the whole, the whole practice into the public school systems, but maybe enhance what we're doing here now that can help, you know, we've, we've done it, we, you know, we had to open enrollment where people would be around, we'll block until four o'clock in the morning, and, and we didn't think we could do it, but, you know, miraculously, we were able to do that, and we have done a lot of things in the course of my time at the school committee, when we, when I first started, that we would say, we absolutely possibly can never do that, Mrs. Mahoney, and we have done it.
Sure.
So I don't doubt that we can't get that information a little bit earlier, that gives you a little bit more opportunity to be better prepared for that, but, because when you, you're in March, and we start the budget process really right after that, it's, it's, we're right up against the wall.
It is.
And then, when you're really fine tuning those numbers, and you've got your budget, then you're, you're, you're racing all the way, the door's opening in September, it just, it seems like kindergarten seems to be the biggest hurdle, because those are the numbers, those are new students coming into our schools, and they're the biggest variable that's going to happen, and traditionally, they're the ones that stay with us the longest, sometimes they leave, they go to private schools in the course of their 12 years, but many of them stay, many of them do stay. So I think, you know, just when looking at that and, and having that insight, I just think that's something that would be valuable to, to look into, not this year, obviously.
No, no, I know, and the last thing we want is last minute, I mean, believing, believing prior to, this is helpful to, to everyone.
Yeah, and again, it's not a criticism, it's just, it's just an observation that when I was looking at different school systems, I was noticing there seems to be a trend of, and, and it's not, again, it's not to say that we're not doing it correctly, it's just an opportunity to be able to reevaluate, reassess, and again determine, as we call this, challenges and opportunities, you know, we seem to do the same thing every year, maybe looking at one or two of those things that we can enhance. So that was my question about feature Noel and the sizes, because that kind of threw me just a little bit. The other thing that I noticed, and I'm just curious, again, when I'm looking at these numbers, and I noticed that Marymount was, is in red, but then back in 2013, I think it's 2013, 2013, you know, we're at Renner 2016 with 344 students, I'm not doubting that it's crowded here, I'm just wondering, what if we do in 2013 when we had 387 students, you know?
Class size is higher.
Yeah, so, so when I'm looking at this, this is, it's helpful information, but when we see that number, it's sometimes historically helpful for somebody to understand, how did we get for that year, is curious, you know? Obviously, we're busting at the seams, but, but, you know, there's some challenges that we have there that are not, and we're saying it's a challenge now, but if you're looking at that to sort of far, that number's much higher, and, you know, I'm just curious to know how we, how we manage that, or maybe different programs.
I think it's, no, I, I think it's class size, because we didn't obviously expand, we didn't do anything, we didn't renovate anything in Marymount, we just, the class sizes were higher, the class sizes were probably 23 and 24 versus 17, 18, 19.
Yep, and then the other question I have was, you know, I, I kind of harp on this every time we look at this, like Lincoln Hancock, two of these schools, we need to kind of delineate between Lincoln Hancock and Clifford Marshall and Sterling and Point Webster, when you, because, because you took, you, in Lincoln Hancock in 2000, you know, 2006 to 2008, you had a class in the grades one through five, and then starting in 2009, you had K through four, still five grades, but different configuration, and those, we don't kind of, it looks like the same data is happening here, and it's just important to have that broken down? No different than when we're saying, you know, we know what, we have a real true neighborhood school, which is great, but, you know, what year do we start having a true neighborhood school? Delineating that helps us be able to understand the population and maybe the shift that's happening, so that we can actually continue to predict as we go forward. I mean, when we're looking at numbers, when we look at any numbers within our school system, we're blending things, and to get a clearer picture for predictions of things or understanding of things, we have to have a complete window as to what we're looking at, and that's all I'm saying, I see this. I still think it's all great information, it's just when talking about different things, like adding or buying buildings, and talk, it's, if that's all niceties, if we don't actually have those configurations of everything, that we need to know that goes as a picture of how we do that, which then brings me to the middle school. So when we're talking about middle schools, you know, again, we don't have that, I believe Clifford Marshall, Point, what should, Point, um, Point had, since Clifford Marshall opened, it was K to, K to four, and, right? Since the.
It was K to five.
It was K, so in what year did the fifth grader move up?
It was probably 2009, maybe, maybe as early as 99 or.
Which I think it's been, since, I think they've been, the fifth graders have been in that school since I started, hopefully, so, and then in 2009, I believe it was when, 2009, was when at Sterling Middle School.
Yes.
We moved our fifth graders up there, and it, again, it just, it blended, the numbers are blending together, I think it's been important. It may not seem like it's an important thing, but if we're going to highlight something as being red and yellow in grade, those things are helpful, but it's really truly understanding the shifts that are happening, especially if we're going to go into a conversation, which I think is an important one, when we start talking about shifting, delineations of where, where we're going to be putting people, because, or for adding on, or potentially talking about adding on a school, and what the impact of that's going to be, like if we were to, you know, the mayor alluded to that during negotiations with the archivists about property, you know, before idea and negotiation, I've been wanting the size, side department that we're dealing with, so that we can find out whether or not we can actually, the feasibility of it for the MSBA, because there are some parameters around that. But along with that, there's important conversations that have to happen at the same time, you know, we have to be having those conversations, and it's not just, you know, the areas that we could pull elementary from, is there a potential that we could pull those fifth grade classes back into the elementary, because that is, you know, that is a sore spot with many families, and you do see it in your, in your trending, that it's those schools that you tend to see people come out of and you're losing population. As much as you think that Lincoln Hancock numbers will grow and pull into it, you're often, oftentimes saying them pull out, but we're saying, you know, it's, it's that fine balance that I think we have, that's the huge opportunity that we have, if we are talking about potentially adding things or doing things, that you want to look at all of those things and understand those numbers completely, so that we can make the best decision for our community and our schools and our students and our teachers that will best serve the whole population, not, you know, and, and that's, of course, all daydreaming right now, because we don't have a school, new school, it's, it's not really daydreaming, I don't want to make it seem as though the mayor's going to be daydreaming, because he's actually in negotiations with people about things, but it, for the school system, it's a little bit of, you know, you know, hopeful, hopeful wish, in wishing right now. But I, I ask that simply because there's, every year we talk about these things, and we have huge challenges, and we do have some issues. I get concerned when I see four classes at feature Noel, those numbers that we see there, and we're not going to know until, you know, March, April, potentially, or later, what the numbers are going to be, so if you get four more classes in that school, I don't know where you're going to put those kids.
If we have four more classes in September, we're okay. It's beyond that, that's what I was explaining, beyond that, we, we need to, I need to come to you and say, we need to do something different in that school.
Certainly. I know there's ways to improve, you could, you could add on to that school as well, but that's not, it's, it's, it always sounds simple, in the community it seems simple, but as we all know, construction of buildings is not simple. You know, I, there's, I always have questions when it comes to this, and I don't mean to go on and on, but it's, it's just that, you know, the, the charts are all there, they've been enhanced over the years, I appreciate all the work that goes into it, but I still think that, you know, that there's some blending of things that are happening that, you know, we need to be clear about what we're, we're talking about.
Sure, and, and you know, and if, if indeed you have my ideas about what we can do, I mean, two years ago, last year, you're talking about ELC classes, because we didn't include that, remember? So we included it, so anything you can come up with that would help the school committee more understand completely, understand as completely as possible.
Yeah, no, I just, it's a, it's a work in progress, it's, I, I, from the very beginning, it has, you know, when we first started, we, I think we just looked at a lot of numbers, and I think this package was, when we first started, this package was maybe 25, so, maybe 20, maybe 25. So it has, and, and I think it's very helpful, and it gives a very clear picture as to, you know, what's happening in our schools as far as the population, where we're crawling, where, and if we have to move, I think you said at one point, you said you might have to move pathways out of Clifford Marshall potentially, and where would they go? And we've done it, and we try to do that in a, in a very caring way, so that we're not disrupting populations, but sometimes it does happen, and we try to do it as early as possible, so that everybody knows where they're going come September. One last question, when it comes to the high school, and you're talking about Gols and the evening classes, are those members included in the full population of North Quincy High, Quincy High School, 32, 32 at Gols and?
How are they?
No, they're separate. That's what I thought, sorry. They have their own code state. That's what I thought, because we were breaking them out like that, I wasn't positive, because they were right after, and I thought, how do they, I didn't think they were part of population, because the numbers were there and they were added at this time, I didn't know, maybe, I mean, that, that would be an enhanced idea, to say, that was a code state, not part of, because we're talking about our public, our, our numbers, and those are not really part of the population of the high schools, because we're setting up their high school classes, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Christopher. Continue on a, on a new business, we have overnight travel out of state, March 24th to 26th, hyperbolic to.
Motion to approve.
Point two rounds. motion approved by Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Hugley, all those in favor?
Aye.
April 5th through 8th.
Motion to approve.
Approved by Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Hugley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can we just have the two nurses? The students, the students who are, who haven't returned yet, they're assigned, they're all the students.
Overnight student travel in-state, March 8th, hyperbolic to Worcester, approved by Mrs. Hugley, seconded by Mrs. Isola, all those in favor?
Aye.
May 22nd to 24th, Sterling Middle School to Camp Wing.
Second.
Motion approved by Mrs. Isola, seconded by Mrs. Hugley, all those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, out-of-state travel one day, Sterling Middle School to Canada Lake, June 14th, motion approved.
Second.
By Mrs. Hugley, seconded by Mrs. Demetius, all those in favor?
Aye.
And additional business, Dr. Christopher.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your consideration here, you know, we're looking at a dedication for, a tribute really, to Bob McGillicuddy on February 6th, uh, February 16th, excuse me, at Lincoln Hancock, starting in the cafeteria, and then moving on to the pool, you know, and, you know, their, their whole family will, will be there. We'd like to dedicate the timing board to Bob that evening, so we don't, I don't have an opportunity to meet with you prior to that, so that's why it's important that we can do that tonight, you know, I'll be appreciative. So I need another motion.
I would make a motion that would aim the timing board, and maybe about McGillicuddy, I think it's a perfect, or fitting memorial to him, with all the hours he put at that pool, touching a lot of lives, so I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion to dedicate the timing board to Mr. McGillicuddy by Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Demetius. Do we need your roll call?
Yeah, that'd be good. Right? Mr. Regoli?
Yes.
Mr. Demetius?
Yes.
Mrs. Hugley?
Yes.
Ms. Isola?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you, and I spoke to Mrs. Lebo earlier, and she also voiced a very strong FX advocate, so I'll thank her very much as well. Thank you.
Communications, upcoming school committee meetings at the Clive Pavilion at 6:30, March 1st. 1st, and March 15th. There are upcoming subcommittee meetings at the Clive Pavilion as well. Teaching and learning will be held on March, February 27th at 5:00. And special education will be held at 6:00. Now we have reports of subcommittees, teaching and learning, Mrs. Isola's report on the January 30th meeting.
Thank you, we met on January 30th, and we were informed about three programs, well, three items. And we learned about the college online campus, that's a program that's in both Quincy High School and North Quincy High School. Ms. Hallett told us that our students have an opportunity to earn high school credits along with college credits issued by Quincy College. Those credits are transferable to other colleges. Last year, the pilot had 50 students in four courses. This year, there are 10 courses with 60 juniors and seniors enrolled, and the goal is to expand next year, so it's really beneficial to our students. And our students and parents have given information about this. Also, we learned about the advanced pathways update, thank you very much for that report by Ms. Roy. We learned that in middle school, there are currently 600 middle school students who are in either APC or taking one advanced course in ELA or math. So that's an additional 340 students minus the 260 who are in APC who have had an opportunity to look at, take these advanced classes. And the thought is to expand to science. So we thanked Mr. Smith for his presentation on work that's being done in that. And then Ms. Roy also gave us the MCAS 2.0 presentation, which was also presented to Citywide Parents Council, I believe that that presentation is on the website for anyone who would like to see it, it was quite extensive. And we learned a lot of really good information about what leadership team Mr. attended, and our faculty have, are planning to prepare our students to successfully take the test. So thank you very much.
Any corrections? Accepted. So moving on to the policy subcommittee, which was held on February 6th, meeting called Order 515, I asked to have section 2.45 and 2.41 as it refers to the open forum section of the school committee meeting agenda, and I'm just, by draft language. Draft language was discussed at the meeting, and we left it in the subcommittee for further discussion. If anybody wants to read the whole subcommittee minutes, they're online, so. Motion to, accepted. No corrections, okay? Moving on to facilities and security, Mrs. Hugley's report on February 6th meeting.
Thank you. On February 6th, the facilities and security subcommittee met. The director of safety and security, Michael Drakeio, was going to give us several updates on issues. Michael Drakeio said there are new signage has been installed at the parking lots of African House, Spahn, Delphiezer, Ojafit Center, and Quincy High School to assist with safety around the school. Department of Public Works installed signage for, designed parking lot to inform the public that the parking is reserved for staff. I asked to go to sign, a larger sign for Snug Harbor parking lot, and that is still pending. Michael Drakeio said that there is a new sign at the Snug Harbor School indicating no left turns for staff parking lot, and will work with Council of Arts and the Traffic Department to see if it can be removed. The sign was installed without notification to the school based on neighborhood concern, and it was, it's hopefully being taken down. Let's see. Superintendent, myself and Michael Drakeio also went out to the Snug Harbor School to observe traffic there due to apparent concern. And we at this time noticed minimal traffic, the principal school also was there with us. I also went out on other days and observed traffic and spoke to the crossing guard, and she did not have any concerns when I spoke to her at that time. I did speak to some neighbors when I was out there, and they had said that there possibly could be more concern if there was snow, but at the time we didn't know there was no snow. Another update, Michael Drakeio updated us on the new Howard Johnson's hotel under the Wyndham Hotel chain, while the president's in. Michael Drakeio met with the general manager and toured the facility, and the property is fully fenced and video security is there. Michael Drakeio also met with the police chief, Keon, to review calls from last year, and nothing major and out of the ordinary was presented. Michael Drakeio expressed positive feelings about the new facility, and manager is interested in becoming a business partner with Central Middle School. These minutes are online in full.
Correction? See you, ma'am. Proof. Health, transportation, and safety, Mr. Demetios to report on February 6th meeting.
Thank you. The health, transportation, and safety subcommittee met on February 6th. We opened the meeting with our new food services director, Sarah DeFur, who's been filling the shoes of the great retired director, John Morrissey. Mr. Fur opens the meeting up by giving us a brief overview of what she's done within her career, as well as what she's been doing now. She's a member of the Quincy Public Schools family. She gave a brief overview of direct certification, the process by which students whose families receive other types of transitional assistance are automatically provided with meals. She spoke, she spoke with us about an update on new equipment that has been funded through a DESE grant, which includes a new salad bar for North Quincy High School, a refrigerator for Parker, and a new oven for Atlantic People's School. Dr. Christopher said that in her first six months with Quincy Public Schools, Mr. Fur has worked hard to establish relationships with principals and school-based food services staff, which is wonderful. Through a collaboration with the National Parks Service, AM'S Historical Site, a picnic in park event was held last April, which was funded through our farm school grants. Principal Plano, Liz Mannan, and Laura gave a brief overview of what has been done with the farm school, farm school grant resources. They spoke a lot of that event at the AM'S National Historical Park. They spoke of all the new garden installations at several Quincy Public Schools, and they gave us a brief overview of what is to come throughout the next year and next year. Senior Director of Student Support Services, Mark Peal, gave us a new, gave us an overview of a new classroom collaborative called Calm Classroom, which is based on the concept of mindfulness. The program helps students and teachers develop self-awareness, mental focus, and inner calm. Mrs. Lebo made a motion to return the meeting at 6:45, and we returned.
Any corrections? Under, accepting. Proof.
I'm going to move it this time, I take off of my subcommittee, the president's in, to the end, since we're all set with that, and also the Snug Harbor traffic issues, since we had updates.
Thank you, Ms. Hugley. Item 9 on the agenda under a new business is executive session for contract negotiations. Make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of contract negotiations with the county that we will be returning regular session. Motion made by Mayor Koch, seconded by Demetios. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bragoli.
Yes.
Mr. Demetios.
Yes.
Mrs. Hugley.
Yes.
Ms. Isola.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll make a motion to be approved, the teams of local union 122, which is our bus drivers association. Motion approved by Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Hugley. Mike, Mike, the, uh.
I am.
Mr. Bragoli.
Roll call, please. Mr. Bragoli.
Yes.
Mr. Demetios.
Yes.
Mrs. Hugley.
Yes.
Ms. Isola.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to be approved, the teams of local union 122, the need for public schools bus attendance, as described in the agreement. Motion approved by Mayor Koch, seconded by.
Mrs. Bismarck.
By Mrs. Hugley. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bragoli.
Yes.
Mr. Demetios.
Yes.
Mrs. Hugley.
Yes.
Ms. Isola.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to be approved, the teams of local union 122, the need for public schools bus attendance, as described in the agreement. Motion approved by Mayor Koch, seconded by.
Mrs. Bismarck.
By Mrs. Hugley. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bragoli.
Yes.
Mr. Demetios.
Yes.
Mrs. Hugley.
Yes.
Ms. Isola.
Yes.